I've got 7:00 PM. Are folks on the committee ready to go? I'm gonna have to guess that's a yes because I can't see everybody unfortunately. So just for folks on the call, conference video, I'm not sure what the right word is. Pam King, our administrative assistant, has put everybody on mute. If you wish to, if you have recognized to speak during the meeting, you just need to unmute yourself. And then that should work. Folks can also raise their hand using the Raise Your Hand button on the side. There are some protocols to the meeting that we typically follow that I'll get into as we get into the meeting. But primarily, we have the business items at hand. Generally, things, items presented by the administration, discussion, questions, comments amongst the committee. And then I can open it up to questions, comments from the audience. We typically try to have comments be three minutes, up to three minutes for each person. Our secretary, Carrie Me, will keep a timer going. Will obviously allow people to, you know, go a little bit over if they need to. But we will let you know if, when you get to the three minutes. So I've got 7:01. So I'm gonna get us started. I did just want to, I have a few remarks to make at the beginning of tonight's meeting before we get started. So I want to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for joining us. Before I call to order, I just want to make this statement to acknowledge this extraordinary time that we are all living under. COVID-19 is a term that most of us never uttered four months ago. And yet it's completely upended our world, our nation, our Commonwealth, our community, and our families. We are all struggling. Every day, we struggle. Whether we be teachers, parents, students, guardians, staff, administrators, every one of us, every day. We're struggling to care for young children while we're also struggling to work at home. We're struggling finding ourselves living with multi-generations under one roof. We're struggling with fears for our spouses and our children, our parents and friends who are first responders, doctors, nurses, EMTs, firefighters, police. We're struggling with being isolated from family and from friends. We're struggling with the loss of gathering for celebrations and milestones, birthdays, weddings, graduations. Some of us are struggling with being unemployed. Others of us are struggling with being overworked. We're struggling with the guilt of not being able to visit family members in nursing homes. We're struggling with families who are ill, who can't get treatment. We're struggling with the pain of losing family and friends. None of us have had a choice about what's happened to our world, to our nation, to our Commonwealth, to our communities, to our families. The only thing we can choose is how we react to this. Tonight's school committee is going to be choose to be grateful. We're gonna be grateful for the staff, the teachers, the department heads, the assistant principals, the principals, the director of student services, the director of business services, our assistant superintendent, and our new superintendent, all who have been working seven days a week to ensure the needs of our Hingham Public School students are met. This team and mate is making decisions that no one has ever expected they would have to make. And not everyone's going to agree with those decisions. And that's perfectly understandable and frankly, to be expected. But I do want everyone to know that this team is smart and they are capable, they are passionate, they're engaged. And we are incredibly lucky to have them in the helm at this time. We are grateful for our parents and our guardians who are navigating a whole new set of daily routines for their children. We're really grateful that you're here tonight to share your experiences and to share your points of view. We are very grateful to our students. They are sacrificing so much to save the most vulnerable among us. We can never give them this time back. We can only give them our gratitude. We are all struggling. We're all carrying burdens. Let's choose to carry them with grace and compassion for each other. So before we start, let's just take a moment to remember those in our community who are suffering with illness and for those we have lost. With that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. A few announcements I have to make regarding the call to order. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If there are any participant who wishes to record this meeting, please notify me now in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all other participants of said recording. So I see Dr. Liliwawa has his hand raised.
Sorry, Michelle, I, I'm not recording it, but I did. Getting a lot of text messages from a couple of our principals and directors who aren't unable to enter the room because I think it's capped at 100 and we're at 100.
That's true.
Got some other community members texting me as well or sending messages. So I don't know if there's any way to lift that cap, but our principals don't even have a chance to jump in, so.
And Libby doesn't, Libby can't get in either.
So that's why I raised my hand, sorry.
Oh, no, sorry. No, it's okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, it took me a moment to recognize that you were raising your hand. I do not know how it is, if it's possible, to lift that cap.
I don't believe it is, Michelle. I will go poke around.
All right, folks, bear with us. Is there? Does anybody know if it's, is it the dial, people dialing in as well as people joining by conference?
I think it's both.
200?
Dr. Wilcox is trying to get in via computer. Mrs. Smith is trying to get in via call and neither are working.
Right.
Hey, Michelle, it's Damian Hendrickson. I was just on a Zoom with 300 people, so I know it can be done.
I think it's by account.
Okay.
I will text the town administrator as we speak.
Okay.
This is Claire Yachts talking. And you have to buy a license in order to allow up to a certain number of participants. So I think that might be a problem.
Yes, so we are using the towns, the towns license to.
Okay.
Meeting and these are the, this is what they purchased.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm muting myself. Thank you.
No, thanks. Go ahead, Jamie.
Well, I mean, so I can, we can certainly use another link that I use for work. Our district account, I think we're capped at 500, if I'm not mistaken. Any of the directors there with me? I feel like when we did our trainings, we had well over 100 people in a room and were able to lift the cap. But I don't know how cumbersome it would be to resend out a new link to.
Jamie?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Mary.
Mary Andrews. We're also capped at 100 because of the district account with the, the privacy.
Okay.
Prior to us having a school issued license.
Gotcha.
That won't help.
I mean, I do have access to my university account that we can use. That's, I think it's 500 cap. But I don't think we can have pound business on private things, so.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we can switch the meeting. Would anyone from the public be willing to get off? Harbor Media is recording this, that you can watch it at a later date. But we have Libby Lewicki, who's a school committee member, who is not able to participate. And then some staff. If anyone can volunteer, we can, okay.
I'll volunteer for that.
We can go off to hopefully let her in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
We'll go, I'll go off as well. Do you just, can you just post the link somewhere on the Hingham Public School so that we can see the video later?
It'll be on the website.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
We can put it out. Carrie, maybe we can put it on the Facebook page and, okay. Thank you, folks.
Do, do you need more spots?
Is Libby in?
I'm in.
Resident. I can let other people in if you need it, though.
All right. So we're at 100, we have 100 right now. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me in.
Thank you. Cynthia, hold on if you don't mind. Jamie, I can't do. Can you?
We got Dr. Wilcox or Melissa Smith on.
I don't see them yet.
All right, I'll give up my spot.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. I'm just.
Thank you.
I'll figure out how to get out of here. Where is that?
There should be a leave.
At the bottom right, leave meeting.
I'm gonna leave as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claire. Thank you very much.
We're at 98, Michelle.
Okay. Melissa and Beth, are you both on? I'm not seeing you here, but you could be under a phone number.
Melissa's on her way. She just said she tried to get in and couldn't get in again, so I told her to try, oh, that's at 100, 98, 98.
I've got 97.
This happened to the harbor master last week with the mooring announcement.
With 100 people? Wow.
Yeah.
This is Claire Yachts again, sorry. Does somebody have, does somebody have administrator rights? Because you can just go into the web portal, User Management, and click on a section where it says pro. And you just click on feature larger meeting or webinar for two or 500? And you save that in your account?
I'm guessing that the administrator is, so we're using the towns website. I mean, the towns Zoom account, not like our own school department one.
They must have an administrative login that they set this up, whoever set this up.
I think Pam.
Right, that's Steve Becker.
Okay, so there's, right in the User Management under Users, you can edit your license and select your license size.
Pam, do we know who is the?
It is Steve Becker. I don't see it. I don't see settings for the account.
Okay. It's under account management, maybe? Or user management?
Yeah, I do not see it.
Okay, I'm just on the Zoom Help Center. But I will log off and I can just listen to it afterwards.
All right, thanks.
So that'll open, that'll open up a spot for you guys.
All right, thank you so much, Claire.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
This is Allison Best, and I can also leave the meeting to accommodate others to come in. And I can just watch it at a later date.
All right, thank you so much, Allison. We're just trying to get some of the administrators on. Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
All right, you too.
All right, Hustleman's a log off here, too.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rindy. Thanks, Rich.
Michelle, I'm happy to watch it in the morning as well. This is Katie Fortune.
Thank you, Katie.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. All right, so we're 98. Jamie, sorry, any word from Beth?
I'll log off, too. I'll watch, I'll listen to the recording. Thanks.
I think it's the timing, like I say, try now, and they're like, oh.
Who's the other one, Beth?
Beth, uh, Wilcox, yeah.
Michelle Montag is calling Steve Becker to see if he can do it.
Oh, there's Melissa.
I got in. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I texted her, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Hoy just got in, too.
Andy and Melissa.
And Steve Becker will work on getting this.
And Dr. Wilcox is in.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Do we think that's everybody, Jamie?
That's all that was communicating with me. I'll, I'll check one other.
All right, let me check. So I'm gonna check my phone, too, folks.
Yeah.
Yeah, Pam, what's our number now? Do you have our number of people? We're at 100 again?
We're at 100, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
All right, um, so it appears that everyone that we need or that, from the administrative side, is on the call as well as many guests which we are welcoming to our meeting. Jamie, do you mind if I ask people on the administrative team if they're trying to get in and can't to text you?
Not at all.
Okay, thanks. And so if you need to get in and you can't get in, text Dr. Liliwawa if you're staff or administrator. And then some very kind folks in the community are willing to hop off to let more of the administrative staff or faculty on. So thank you for that, everybody. All right, so we were at the call to order, which I've done, and I don't believe anyone is recording the meeting. So we're gonna move on to item number two, which is approval of minutes. Just looking at the packet, do we have minutes for?
We don't.
No.
We don't have minutes today.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right, so we can move on to item three, which is questions and comments from the, anybody here at the meeting tonight. Just to clarify, this part of the meeting is the public comment period. And this is for anything, any items that people want to bring to the attention of the committee that are not on the agenda tonight. So if this is about an item that's on the agenda, you can speak to those issues during the agenda item. But while we're here, this part of the meeting is just for any new information that someone needs to bring to the attention of the committee. So it's a very long speech to read about this part of the agenda. If anyone does have something to bring up that's not here. So if you are on the call and wanted to bring something up, could raise your hand using the Raise Hand button. And I'll give it a minute to see if anyone's reading their hand. All right, I don't see anything new business to add for public comments. So we will move on to item four on the agenda, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Austin is gonna give us an update on Hingham's Remote Learning Plan and some other community items that he is going to bring up. So, Dr. Austin, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate that. And good evening, everyone, and glad to see so many people here. The work that's been done, I, I wanna start with all the work that has been done. And to date, we have been out now seven weeks, or we're in our seventh week, actually. And, and the work has been extraordinary in coming up with the remote, remote learning plan that we're all working on. So what I'm gonna do is, is that's been kind of the purview of Dr. Liliwawa and, and the directors and the principals. And I'm gonna ask Dr. Liliwawa to chime in here and, and give us an update of where we are on the, on the plan itself.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Good evening, everyone. Last week, the governor extended the school closure through the end of the academic year. There had been, up to that point, hope really that we would be back come, in coming up early May. But as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to sort of play itself out across the Commonwealth, the governor did make the decision to close schools through the academic year. On Friday evening at around 8:30 PM, the, the state released its next round of guidance to support districts in the development of remote learning plans and to really strengthen the plan that was in place. The district's leadership team, I should say, members of the district leadership team met earlier this afternoon to do a preliminary review of the updated guidance, coupled with the remote learning plan as previously formulated. And sort of, where it's still in revision, what I can tell the committee is that we are hoping by mid to late this week to actually do a new public release to our community to sort of let them know about the updates. The two areas that we do anticipate there being some revision around. The first is offering more opportunities. One of the things that new guidance does is it talks about the need to begin to develop some thoughtful planning around a multi-tiered model for social-emotional academic supports, right? So it talks about sort of that idea of while the primary means of instruction is designed to be asynchronous, but they are opening the door for synchronous live connections for kids who might need additional support relative to reading skills or writing skills or mathematics skills. So the team is currently thinking through what that would look like and how we would run intervention. The other major piece that shifted is the, the, the state's asking us to focus on really finite skills between now and the end of the school year. So they release what they're terming power standards. And I want to say what they're terming power standards because the district actually uses Larry Ainsworth's rigorous, rigorous curriculum design to do our curriculum unpacking and mapping. And in the same terminology is, is used there as well. So where, prior, we were sort of thinking about keeping everything moving until we could get back to school. Now the state is saying you will not be back to school. And rather than trying to fit everything in, you really need to focus across ELA, mathematics, social studies, and science on these really finite core areas that we want kids to build a level of proficiency in, in order to advance to the next grade. So those are two major areas of shift in the current plan. One is the introduction of opportunities for live synchronous connection beyond social-emotional check-in. And the other is sort of really refining and refocusing our attention on the most incredible, the most incredible, the most critical, rather, things to know in order to advance to the next grade level. So I, I, last time we were able to talk, I actually had the draft, the, the plan ready to go and could sort of walk through the major points. At this stage in our development, the guidance was just released Friday evening at 8:30. Our team did meet today and began working. We hope to have a draft ready for our administrative team tomorrow for discussion, particularly at the elementary level, which is where we're really thinking about particularly the primary grades, so kids in kindergarten one and two, where the primary mode, so the primary focus of being in school is on the development of reading and literacy skills, right? And that's the population of kids we are most concerned about relative to instruction is that group of kids and their reading and making sure that they're getting and, and being supported in their reading development. Mary, our, our English director is here who can talk to you a little bit about what we currently have in place and sort of where we see opportunities to sort of do more support for our youngest learners. But beyond that, they're really, really having us sort of laser focused in on what we're focusing on between now and June with the understanding that there is no way that we could actually cover all of the expectations in the curriculum frameworks between now and June with the kids working through remote means. And so, Mary, I don't know if you want to speak at all a little bit about sort of our intervention systems as, as they're currently in place for our reading, for reading skill. But I think that as a, as a leadership team that we're talking about, that's sort of where the, the biggest thrust of our focus is going.
Sure, some of the things that we have in place right now at the elementary level with the reading teams that are comprised of the reading specialists at each school and their reading tutors and reading professionals assigned at each school include supporting the teacher tier one instruction with interventions that help make accommodations and modifications in the rollout of the reading, writing, and wordwork assignments that go out in the ELA elementary lesson plans every week. Part of the additional supports that they're providing are looking at, and many of you probably know, we now have Lexia accounts for every child in the district for the extent of the closure. And we have that program research-based way of providing differentiated instruction and progress reports along the sort of six primary areas of reading. What we're doing, the reading tutors in addition, under the guidance of the specialists are tracking the students' work in Lexia. And that's, that's assigned different amounts per week based on grade level. And then they're monitoring what sort of hurdles kids are coming up against and kids who are struggling to reach different benchmarks. They sort of pause their instruction, gather, building like support packages that practice the skill that, that is causing a problem for students. And then they will, at this juncture, they're sending those skill builder packets out through the classroom teacher so as to sort of keep that method of communication centralized. But we are part of our discussions this week. And what we started last week was talking about ways that, you know, are we going to be looking at these sort of supports, whether it's through foundations or Lexi or a combination of things that we're looking at to help students, especially reading specialists, end up taking charge of students who are not on IEPs, but, but definitely need additional support. So they'll be providing folders of lessons that can be done instead of the typical ELA assignments and would be in, in sort of communication with the classroom teacher that, either for that day or even for that week, depending on the sort of depth of the supplementary supports that, that would count as the kids, the LA, that particular child's ELA instruction that week, especially when it comes to wordwork, so that we're trying to abide by the sort of half-day recommendation guideline of put out by DESI as far as what a, what a typical school day should look like. And that is sifting down into two hours a day of combined math and English. And that usually shakes out to mimic what they get in a typical school day as far as ratio of time spent, which ends up being about an hour and 15 of ELA to 45 of math per day. So those are some of the things that we have in place. There are others where reading specialists will make additional sort of loom videos to supplement empowering writers' lessons. Depends on the grade and level. But the reading specialists have met with me a few times since the new guidance has come out by the state to sort of capture what we are doing asynchronously now in terms of providing that largely to tier-two intervention support. Some of the elementary schools, the reading specialists also are in charge of some smaller groups of tier-three intervention as well, although that, that often tends to fall under the auspices of special education. What that's certainly, it compiled the doc, they're sharing it with their grade level meetings tomorrow to make sure that everybody is aware of the additional intervention and supports and resources that are available.
And so the, the, the next iteration of the plan will really sort of communicate that more clearly to the community. We, we don't want the perception to be that if you can't get that lesson done, then sort of that's it. Particularly at the elementary level, there is sort of a, a, a multi-tiered system in place even remotely. So this, coming, going into this week, the elementary team will be sort of discussing this more thoughtfully with the grade level team. So the, the teachers do meet as a grade level team once a week. And so heading into this week's meeting will be discussions on the new guidance and sort of discussions around how we can better utilize or better actualize our multi-tiered system. And also be thoughtful of the other support staff that we have on faculty, such as our tutors or our parent educators and sort of where they can offer additional support for students in their learning. The other piece I will mention is we did put out a major survey, not only to our parents and our community members, but also to our faculty, to sort of gain feedback as we sort of enter into week four of sort of remote learning as opposed to engagement. The first three weeks were engagement, the next three weeks were designed to be remote learning. But with the vote to go into April break, it's actually four weeks of remote, remote learning before we look ahead to the final seven weeks of Remote Learning 2.0 to solicit feedback. I will note the other major area, or potential area, I shouldn't say major, or the other eight major area of the plan that is still undergoing, and I know it's on, up for discussion a little bit later, is on the grading practices at our high school as well as sort of refining and really getting specific on what the elementary system for reporting will look like. And so I know that Mr. Swanson will be talking on his proposal a little bit. But whatever that proposal is, will actually go into the Remote Learning Plan 2.0 as well. And I'd be happy to take any questions at this point, Michelle. If you prefer, I can turn over to Dr. Viness to talk a little bit about special education. But I am happy to take questions. I know that was a lot. But we don't have a refined plan in place as of yet. This is the week where it's in progress to hopefully have it finished by the end of this week with release, by the end of the week to the community.
Okay. And just so folks know, we do have another school committee scheduled, meeting scheduled for next Monday. We typically don't have them back-to-back, but this actually would have been our last school committee meeting of the, of this term. But given that the town meeting and the election has been postponed, we do have a regularly scheduled meeting for next Monday as well. Does anybody on the committee have any questions at this moment for Dr. LaBillaud? Committee members, if you do, I would say you don't have to raise your hand. Just unmute yourself and ask a question. All right. If not, I guess I will ask if anybody on, members of the audience.
Michelle, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
It just took me a while to hit the button. I, thank you very much, Jamie. And actually, I just, I want to say thank you to the leadership team. We know you are all working overtime and on overdrive. And I appreciate the thoughtfulness of all students. Are, what are the other subjects that have this refined focus? Like with math, are there certain grades that you're targeting? Or like you said, with the reading skills is a key target of your focus?
Yeah. So we have other populations of kids. For example, our Title I students who particularly are at the middle school level who do receive support in mathematics and sort of the, so we're doing a similar focus on all kids really across the district that we know either are eligible for additional supports due to screening data or who might be eligible under Title I support. So it's not, I was highlighting sort of primary reading as being our major area focus, but it really is around all of our kids who we know may be at risk for lack of success in school, either based on screening data or participation in our Title I or other supplemental support programs.
Okay. And then is the staff survey have the same deadline as tonight as the parent and community survey?
It does, yeah. And I want to explain, we're happy to sort of extend that timeline a bit. I wanted to sort of give some context, though, around why it is when it was. And that was really to be able to, so first unpack and analyze that data and then have it meaningfully translated into our plan. And because of our time crunch to sort of get a turnaround back to the community on what the plan will be, we needed to sort of make sure that we had a reasonable turnaround time for people to give us their feedback. What I will note to you while we're here is as of right now, we actually have, I'm just going to get the exact number, as of right this minute, 296 faculty have already responded. And on this community side, I will look at the total number. So we do have a fair amount of participation. And the home survey for the parents and community at this time has 1,816 people who have completed it.
That's excellent, and I would not extend the deadline. You all need the time to study it and unpack it and understand what it is. And, you know, we're, we're all going in unprecedented times. And you have to do the best you can. And that's incredible feedback. That's great response. Take it, work with it, run with it, come back. You guys need time to figure out what to deliver. So I would not extend the deadline because how much more incremental ideas, that's incredible feedback. So, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
And the next iteration, just for the committee's benefit, the next iteration of the plan will also begin to tie every decision we make in the plan back to some data point, right? Whether that's coming from the survey, whether that's coming from our faculty or our community feedback, or whether that's coming from what we know about research relative to effective online learning. So we, there's a part of me that is an academic that's sort of in my training. And so there's a piece that went to the research to sort of say, how do people that do this work and study this kind of a dynamic of teaching, learning through digital means, what do they know to be true of really effective programs? And so we've been doing sort of a deeper dive in the literature again as we sort of prepare for 2.0. So that whatever the final plan is, the point is it would really, it will also connect to data both internally through our surveys as well as externally through peer-reviewed research.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the committee?
Michelle, sorry, excuse me. We now have over 100 people, so they were able to fix that problem.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the community who wants to, has any questions for Dr. LaBillaud about this preliminary piece of the Remote Learning Plan? If so, I guess raise your hand. Not on camera, by using the little button at the bottom because I can't see everyone. All right. I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. All right. Jamie, do you have more for us? Are we turning it over to Dr. Viness?
That's where I am for now. And I'll turn over to Dr. Viness to take it away with students with special education.
All right. Thank you. Hello, Dr. Viness.
Hi. Good evening. Michelle, that was such a lovely opener. I think you were the first person to make me cheer up in these seven weeks. And so I really thank you for those lovely comments that you made at the beginning. So as Dr. LaBillaud was describing in our work with the Remote Learning Plan, the work by way of special education is included in that work with Remote Learning Plan by way of how we guide our teachers and offer them guidance as to where to go as we move from the short-term plan to a more long-term plan. And as he said, part of that consideration is what synchronous learning looks like when we take it in consideration along with asynchronous instruction. And so we're doing quite a bit of work trying to figure out pedagogically, what is the best way to move forward with that? And so I'm grateful to work with the people who are as nerdy as I am about pedagogy and how to look into that deeply to make sure that what we're delivering is actually effective. It's not just simply delivering it. We want to make sure that our teachers are well instructed, well-educated as to how to adopt brand-new pedagogy that hasn't been done before. So simultaneously, though, we are working as a department on updating our special education procedural manual to reflect the new changes that may be made in the Remote Learning Plan, give our special educators a bit more guidance targeted toward the work that they're doing and offer procedural guidelines for them as they move from short-term instruction to more long-term instruction.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone on the committee have questions for Dr. Viness?
Michelle, I do. So I just had a question about the communication between the special education teachers and the general education teachers. I've heard some feedback from parents that there's confusion about if a special education teacher gives modified work, does the student have to complete both the general education and the special education? How is that communication all working?
So what I'm hearing is that there might be a specific circumstance where communication needs to be improved, you know, between those individuals. So I'm happy to help out in those circumstances. But what's been communicated to teachers in the first edition of the Remote Learning Plan is that they are working collaboratively to meet the needs of the students that they share. And they are collectively responsible for creating modifications to those assignments. They are, you know, if students are receiving a bit more instructional opportunity because the special education teacher is offering additional guidance by way of skill instruction, then those, and if there's too much work being delivered, then I would suggest that those families reach out directly to those teachers to communicate what it is, what the volume might be. But because many students have both the general education teachers and special education teachers who are working on parallel highways, but special education teachers are responsible for more skilled-based instruction. And so they might be simultaneously providing additional instruction in let's say, reading comprehension. And the student is also participating in their grade-level English class. There may be additional work being provided. And I would suggest that the family connect with those teachers to determine what is the priority for that student and where is the student feeling most successful? And then perhaps how they can maybe merge those two things together. But those are going to be individualized determinations that they're going to have to make per child, per family, based on what's working for them. And that's the global guidance that they'll be given because we need to maintain some degree of individualization.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Viness, either from the committee or folks on the phone? All right. I'm not seeing any. Oh, go ahead. Did someone have a question?
They're muted, Michelle.
If you are asking a question, you need to unmute yourself. Sorry. All right. Sorry. I think someone had a question, but we cannot hear you if you do. All right. Well, I'm going to move on.
Excuse me, Michelle, is the chat, is there any chat feature at all? Doesn't look like there is.
No.
Okay. All right.
If someone, you know, if you have something you want to add or if we weren't able to hear you, just raise your hand using the raise hand button or unmute yourself and say, and ask for my attention. All right. Is that, Jamie, are you done? Have you finished your?
Yeah, that's it for now. I am hopeful that next week when the committee meets, I can give you sort of have been able to have given you all a version of the draft that has been released and sort of can have more conversation about it at next Monday's meeting. If there are any questions, or I can at least take a few minutes to give you a broad overview of what, and actually highlight sort of the salient differences between the first iteration and the second iteration of the Remote Learning Plan.
I'm happy to do the same for the special education procedures as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you both. All right. Dr. Austin, I'm going to go back to you. You were going to give us some updates. I think we put this under community issues and overview of some of the things being done in the district.
Yeah. Thank you. And first of all, I want to start with Dr. LaBillaud and Dr. Viness. Thank you so much for all your hard work. It's not just hard work, but it's groundbreaking work that hasn't been done before. So I'm really appreciative of that. And to all the directors, the principals, the resource teachers, you've done incredible work and I just want to thank you and make sure that people know how hard you're working because I know it's tireless and I know it's difficult, but never once have you wavered for what's in the best interest of students. So thank you all for your incredible efforts. And I also echo, Dr. Viness, to you, Michelle, on that wonderful opening and heartfelt because I know this is not the easiest time for anyone. And I appreciate your willingness to be vulnerable with all of us to talk about how hard it is. And I understood that. So thank you very much. And I don't want to be redundant to some of the things that Dr. LaBillaud had just mentioned, but I do write my notes. So if there is something that's been already said, I apologize, but we'll work through that. But first of all, just thank you for the opportunity to share an update with the school committee and our school community. We are now in our seventh week of this unprecedented health crisis. And last week, Governor Baker announced that all schools in Massachusetts will remain closed for the remainder of the school year. With that difficult news, the administration, faculty, and staff began the process of planning for remote learning through June 17, 2020. I want to take the opportunity to thank the students, the parents, and staff for their incredible efforts during the transition to remote learning. And I appreciate the patience of the community as we continue to learn and adjust to this, what they call the new normal. And I swear I'm going to outlaw that term after we're back in school. Finding the best way to meet the needs of all children and families is not easy, but we remain focused on providing the very best opportunities possible to all of our students. As we continue to step forward, I want to assure the students and parents that the administration has listened carefully to your concerns and we will continue to do so. We have focused our efforts on student engagement and we are dedicated to adjusting our practices to ensure that all students are actively engaged in the learning process. I sincerely appreciate all of the input we've had from many families, students, and staff. We've received literally hundreds of emails, sometimes daily, about your experiences of remote learning, including what we've done well and of course, where we have fallen short. We've read every email and we've taken your concerns seriously. The emails have been diverse and oftentimes offer stark contrast in opinion. For example, while some students report that they felt overwhelmed by assignments, others have expressed the work is way too easy. Many students and families have argued that the determination of grading with credit, no credit is simply unfair, while others have argued that credit, no credit is fair during this unprecedented circumstance. Many families want more online learning, while others are overwhelmed by the process. As administrators, we will continue to listen to your concerns and we will do our very best to find the right balance for all families and students. I also want to thank all the parents and staff that have completed the survey so far. As we've already said, we've had an incredible response. And we will tabulate those results, as Lizer just mentioned, and we'll report those results as soon as possible. So we'll most likely have those for you next week. With the closure of schools for the remainder of the year, we had to make the difficult decision to cancel all end-of-the-year activities. While I know many students look forward to spring sports, the concerts, and all the events of the season, our seniors in the class of 2020 are undoubtedly the most heavily impacted. And Emma, I know you're one here tonight, so I appreciate you're here. Until last week, we had all held on to the slim chance that we could return to school in May, play at least a shortened spring sports season, and hold graduation on May 30th as planned. Unfortunately, none of that is possible now. For seniors, Principal Swanson recently surveyed the students and parents, and I know he is working on alternative plans for graduation and other senior events. We simply cannot let this closure dampen our ability to celebrate with and for our students. If at all possible, we will find a way to hold graduation and other senior events, even if they have to be held later during the summer months. As a class, the seniors have endured much and we will do everything we can to properly celebrate you and your many accomplishments. I want to thank again the students, parents, staff, and administration for all that all of you have done during this incredible closure. I know it's been hard and being so isolated is taking a toll on everyone. There is much work to be done to meet the needs of all of our students and we must band together and do it together. We will make it through this and someday soon, I am confident that we will once again be in the classroom, on the fields, and in the auditoriums at all of our schools, a time that I know we all very much look forward to. So thank you very much for the opportunity to update you. I know this just touches upon all the things that are going on in the schools and all the stresses in the, in the community. But we are standing as one unit. And I know I'm just, I hold on to the confidence that in the end we'll find our silver linings and we'll be able to move forward. So thank you, Michelle.
Very much. Paul, I think you also have some communications under 5.1. And then, or do you want, do you want to do yours and then we'll do Emma?
I lost you for a minute there.
Sorry.
I didn't catch all your questions. Sorry.
No, that's good. I was just saying that we could move on to 5.1 communications.
Yep. I just want to make sure there's no other questions regarding my update and any questions that people have of me. I don't know if you want to ask those or you just want to move forward.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Austin right now? I don't see any, so I think we're good to go on to communications.
All right. Well, I'll provide you just a couple of things. One, I've recently been informed that the Hingham High School Social Studies Department has been selected by the Massachusetts Council for the Social Studies has been selected by the Massachusetts Council for the Social Studies for an inaugural recognition of excellence in teaching social studies award. That's very exciting. It is the first time award, and I'm very proud of our social studies department. That's right. The, you have clap button on there. I know you do. So congratulations to our incredible teachers and our staff for an incredible job well done. So that's excellent. And just another communication, we did receive word from the US News World Report that Hingham High School has once again earned the distinction of being one of the best high schools in America, distinction, and we're very proud of the work of our students and our administration once again. So amongst the bad news, we have great news and we should celebrate that together. So that's my communications.
Those are great communications and that is great news. Thank you and congratulations on to the history department and to Hingham High School. Excellent work, everyone. 5.2 on our agenda is student communications for senior Emma Quilty. Are you still with us, Emma? Did you hang in there?
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, everyone. Hope everyone hasn't gone too crazy yet. The rain sure does make this quarantine a little more miserable. Although, as I mentioned in the last meeting, that the news was challenging and upsetting for us seniors and quite honestly, the whole school. When Governor Baker made the final call last week, our hearts sank. The reality of the situation truly set in and it led to many tears. Never stepping into the high school, a place where we have grown up and created relationships that will last forever, seems very surreal. To some of my most influential teachers from this past year, Mrs. Allen, Mr. Hutchinson and Miss O.C., I miss attending everything about your classes and have appreciated all you have done to make my high school experience nothing but the best. To Mrs. Bruno, or who I know as Miss Foley, I hope there is a miracle before the end of June because I really want to see your new baby girl. And to Officer Ford, if you're out there, I parked in a teacher's spot the other day. It was the best looking one in the empty parking lot. To the junior class for putting up a sign on the softball fence saying, "We love our seniors." It meant a lot and showed that during a crisis, our students can come together and support each other. We know you're ready to fulfill our leadership role next year. To Mr. Swanson and the administration for taking their time to send out a survey to the senior class and their parents on the rescheduling of important events, the communication was appreciated. To my class officers, whether rain or shine, the senior countdown on our Instagram page brightens the day. Although we are not in school, many students continue to fulfill their time with volunteering to assist those in need by making masks, buying groceries and creating fundraisers. Thank you for that. Thank you from the Hingham High School student body to the essential workers that risk their lives for our needs as a community. Lastly, I just want you all to know, I'm not sure how or when it will be, but the class of 2020 will have a prom and graduation. I'm not sure if it'll be in August or even a year from now, but we are determined to celebrate together.
Thank you so much, Emma. And my offer on behalf of the committee still stands for that heck of a fifth year reunion when you guys come back. So hold us to it. Thank you so much. That's, those are amazing and it's so hard for all the things that you're going through and we appreciate everything all you young people are doing to keep us old people safe and sound. So thank you. All right. 5.3 on our agenda is other communications. Did anyone on the committee have any communications they need to share? All right, I'm seeing none. So let's move on to item six on the agenda, which is unfinished business. It feels like this entire year is unfinished business. We've got an item 6.1 is to receive an update on the operating and capital budget for fiscal year '21 and to act as appropriate. So John, are you going to, I'm not sure if Paul's going to do that or John, can you give a quick update?
I can start and then I'll let John, if John would just chime in. First of all, you know, this is, I think without saying that the financial impact of COVID-19 and the closure is hard to determine right now. We have yet to hear what the financial impact is going to be. But I think it's prudent that we continue to move forward as we had been prior to the closure. And for what I'm understanding from the state level at this time, we don't anticipate any changes in what we received for FY '20. But now we need to move forward with FY '21. And, and so I also wanted to say, just before we get into the FY '21 and you vote on that, you know, we've taken all the steps we can to be fiscally responsible for the remainder of this year as we go into FY '21, but I'll, I'll leave it to John and add anything to that.
Yeah, so the it is, it certainly is difficult times. You know, as far as the FY '20 budget is concerned, I do believe that that will be coming in positive, not significantly positive. You know, with the closure, we're sort of like, we have some significant increases in the form of loss revenues such as full day K. You know, and some pre-K revenues as well as some athletic revenues. And, you know, so those are causing a sort of a negative variance, but the actual slowdown in terms of the buildings have been set down. It's been a very good energy year because it's warmer. And, you know, so some of those are offsetting, plus the overall slowdown in contract expenditures over the last month will really put us in bringing this operating budget for FY '20 in pretty, pretty neutral. Looking, so, you know, I'm projecting now, I think about this somewhere around $100,000. I do believe that as I kind of close out some additional encumbrances as we near the end of the year, that that number could go up more. And, and that presumes that we're using all of the revolving account balances that we have, you know, offset in the budget, in the FY '20 budget right now. So, you know, if, once again, it's, it's a, will be a very tight year. I think at the beginning of the year, we were having some possibly in a negative situation with some tuition increases that we had not configured into the budget. So some of the other slowdowns are now sort of offsetting that as well. So I think FY '20 will bring in fine. FY, moving to FY '21, as Paul was talking, there was a forecast meeting today. And I think the plan is still to go forward with the FY '21 budget and trying to use once again revolving funds and other types of sources of revenues to sort of make up for the, the, the year and, you know, with the hope that, you know, the situation doesn't worsen throughout FY '21 and starts to sort of recover.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so just for the committee's information, myself, Carlos, John and Paul attended a forecast meeting at 6:00 PM tonight with the town administrator, assistant town administrator and Karen Johnson, the chair of the Board of Selectmen, just to go over the, and sorry, the advisory committee member, a couple of my, sorry. The chair and vice chair of the advisory committee as well to go over the forecast and then the plan for the fiscal '21 budget. And they are, we are going to move forward with the budgets as presented. I think there's some adjustments on the revenue side, but the, the expense budget side is staying the same. So with that being said, this board, this committee needs to formally vote the budget number that we want to put forth to the town at the town meeting. Is there any, are there any questions from the committee on the budget? At this point, we've been talking about it since, since January. At a time in, the world was a very different place. But I don't know if anyone has any last minute questions for John or for Dr. Austin. But if not, or if any of the members of the public have any questions about the next year's budget. Seeing and hearing none, I would take a motion from someone on the committee for a budget vote. Anybody want to?
We can't hear you.
Should have just Carlos. Well done, Carlos.
Okay. He's muted. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the budget for fiscal year '21 to present a town meeting of $56,73985, which represents a 4.4% increase over fiscal year '20.
I'll second.
Thank you, Carrie. Was that you?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, Liza made a motion. Carrie, any discussion? Seeing none. Sorry, let's do a roll call vote, just because I can't see everybody at one time. Ness?
Hi.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Carlos? Oh, Carlos, we can't hear you. Carlos?
Just do a thumbs up, Carlos, if you're, if you're voting aye. There it is.
There we go. We got Carlos. All right. And I am an aye as well. All right, thank you. We unanimously voted budget for fiscal year '21. Thank you, everyone. Budget season feels like it was a long time ago, but it really wasn't that long ago. But it's great news and appreciate everybody's, everyone's hard work on that. From the administrative staff to the resource teachers, to everyone who puts so much work into putting together a great budget and our, our Board of Selectmen people and our advisory committee really appreciate the work on this. All right. Item 6.2 is to hear an update on the fiscal year '21 school calendar. Paul, do you have, I think you have some updated information from?
Yeah. Yeah, I do. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, I actually gave you, or maybe even a month ago, we talked about now a potential calendar for FY '21. Since that time, the governor has actually declared that September 14, 2020 will be an additional holiday for next year only, which is the Patriots Day we just missed. And I think the Boston Marathon is going to run on September 14. So we've made that adjustment. We'll bring that calendar back out to you on May 4th for consideration for the school, for the full school committee again. And you can certainly take action at that time.
Okay, great. Thank you. 6.3 is to receive a revised school committee calendar for fiscal year '20. Sorry, is that calendar in our packets?
It was in your package. Yes, it was. And just reflects that the town meeting is now scheduled for June 22nd, and there's a brief meeting just before that.
Yes, perfect. All right, thank you. And I want to actually take just a second to recognize Dr. Ed Schreier on our committee and to thank him because this should be Dr. Schreier's last school committee meeting. But we are very fortunate that the school committee term has been extended through the end of June, and we have Dr. Schreier for a couple of more, a couple of more months. So Dr. Ed, thank you for agreeing to stay on until we have a new board elected.
You're welcome. Raise my hand. Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
Going back.
Uh oh, you froze, on me at least.
Yep.
See frozen for everybody.
Beauty of Zoom.
Ed, we lost you. He's raising his hand. Do I have to recognize him?
Look, he's back. He's back now. Ed, we lost you through most of that.
We, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Going.
I feel like what Ed is saying right now is very eloquent and well said, but we can't hear him, unfortunately. Ed, I'm so sorry. You keep freezing. Pam, can, can you unmute him?
He's not, well, he's muted now, but he wasn't for most of it. Yes, I can. He's unmuted now.
All right. Ed, I'm so sorry. We keep.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
On 6.1, did we vote for the capital, a part of that, that 6.1?
This is why we're going to miss you, because we did not. So let's go back to that. Thank you so much. No, I appreciate it. Liza, would you want to make a motion to accept the capital budget as well? Or Dr. Ed, would you like to?
Yeah, just Ed wanted to do it.
I'm afraid to try it. Let somebody who.
I'll make the motion and Ed can second it. How about that? So, so I'll make him to approve the fiscal year '21 capital budget of $1,349,866.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, let's do a quick roll call. Ness?
Hi.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Thank you. Carrie?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
And I thought, and I am an aye as well. So that is the capital budget also approved. Thank you again, everyone, and thank you, Ed, for reminding us about the very important capital piece of our budget. All right, so everyone sees the calendar change. So hopefully everyone's good with that small revision to the calendar to move us for having a meeting right before a town meeting on the 22nd. And that will be subject to change if this town meeting changes. All right.
Michelle, one thing, Michelle, on the calendar, we don't have to do it tonight, but we should think about looking at July and August, just if the election is happening. It still happens, the end of June, that we usually only have one July meeting, but we might need to have two if we have new member or we will have a new member. And then getting going on that new class. So that's just something in the future to think about.
Good thinking.
I have a question.
Sure.
So it says that the May and June meetings are going to be in the school department conference room is, was that going to change and be remotely done remotely? Or are we assuming we're going to be able to go in?
I think that probably remains to, I don't know what the governor's latest guidance.
More this week. We'll know about the fourth this week, I think, Carrie, you know.
I think he already said it. I thought he said the 18th, but I might be wrong. I'll check. All right. But thanks, Libby. We'll, we'll confirm that if those next meetings are going to be remote or in person.
Okay.
Yeah, before, yeah, let's figure that out. May 4th, we may want to do remote because I have a feeling that even if we can have meetings, it will be limited to the number of people we can have physically in attendance. So, but we'll figure that out in the next couple of days.
Michelle, can I just add to that really quickly? I mean, we're going to have to take some time to absolutely remote because we're going to figure out where we can have those meetings that we can also be a social, safe social distance apart, and our current setup is just not going to accept that. So I'm going to have to be really thoughtful about that.
All right. So let's definitely plan that the May, next Monday's meeting, given that it's so soon, will definitely be remote. Okay? So Pam, can you, can you and I work on the agenda later this week? Can we just remember to get the Zoom conference set up for that?
Might as well do the next two, Michelle. I mean, when you, you know, from where we're at right now, I mean, if the second one is there. We will be able to keep that social distance and.
No. All right. So the May 4th and the May 18th, we'll, we'll continue to do those remotely. All right. Okay, thank you. Thanks for pointing that out, Libby. All right, moving on to new business, 7.1 is we're going to hear an update from food services. Kim Smythe is going to provide us with an update on everything that food service has been doing. And Kim, I know your folks have been working as hard as everybody the past few weeks.
Well, it's, it's, it's a different world for us. You know, we're, we're there Monday through Friday. We're at the high school. We're delivering meals. We have pickup service. We're serving the veterans and the seniors from the senior center are, well, you know, they go through the senior center. And we're working with transportation to get, most of the meals are being delivered. So.
Okay.
It's, at this, at this point, it's pretty, it's, it, the routine's there. So, you know, we're feeding probably on average, we're doing 20 meals for students. And about 25. and about 25 for, between the vets and the seniors, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, thank you for doing that. It was, you know, we recognized, and Kim and the staff at Central Office are really great in recognizing that it wasn't just students in the town who might have food insecurity, and that we had the staff willing to come in and make the meals, we had the food inventory to put meals together, and we had bus drivers and transportation available that would deliver the meals, and I mean, for a lot of people in our town, it's a great lifeline to them, and I know how much they appreciate it, and how much we all appreciate your staff who is coming in and working to put these meals together for folks, to help them out during this time, it's really, really appreciated, so thank you.
Just to note, the governor has made Friday lunch hero day, super lunch hero day.
That's awesome, awesome. Good for you.
Michelle, can I, can I ask Kim a question?
Sure.
Uh, Kim, as a veteran and as a senior, can I qualify?
You got to talk to Lisa Potts. You got an in with Lisa Potts?
I did, I, I thought one of the best messages that I got, and I, I shared this with Kim earlier in the, in the.
It was good.
Children, children being at home, one, a parent had texted me and they said, you know, the homeschooling part I can, I can deal with, it's the making three meals a day that is really getting to me. So I thought, you know, everybody appreciates a good breakfast and lunch at the schools, so you're definitely missed by a lot of people. They miss the teachers too, for sure, but the food service is great.
Lunch lady every single day.
That's true, that's very true.
Every day, all year.
That is a very good point. Well, thank you so much for that update, we really appreciate it, and thanks for all the good work you guys are doing in your department.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to 7.2. That's to hear an update on the operating budget for fiscal year 20, so the current year's budget versus the next year's budget that we just voted on. So obviously, there's been a lot of changes with revenues and expenses, so John, Paul, whichever of you wants to lead us off.
Yeah. Go ahead, John.
Okay, no, I'll lead, I sort of alluded to it before, I'm sorry, I got the two things mixed up when we wrote about it, but.
No.
You know, for FY.
Never hear too much about it, John.
What's that?
Never hear too much about the budget.
Oh, yeah, right. For FY20, I mean, we should come in, you know, we'll, we'll be coming in positive. You know, I have the projected now for about $100,000, and as I said before, that's really a combination of a couple of things. One is, you know, we, we've had some significant revenue losses with full day K, athletics, pre-K, and, you know, so those, those expenses, and at the beginning of the year too, we had some extra special ed tuitions that weren't incorporated for the budget, so at one point, I was projecting, you know, significant sort of deficit that would sort of have to make up throughout the course of the year, and that would have been through spending controls. You know, typically around February and March, I would sort of like start turning off purchase orders anyways if I thought we were getting in trouble, but it turned out that, you know, this closure actually turned off those purchase orders, so, you know, in that sense, we've been making up a lot of the deficit that I would have projected. Plus, two buildings since the closure have actually been turned down to sort of night settings. You know, at 55 degrees all day long, you know, of course, even less now, you know, when, when the nicer weather happens, and it was also a very good energy year, the winter was fairly warm, energy prices, you know, we were, been purchasing off market, so they had continued to decline, to decline, so I think a lot of the revenue losses and the deficit that we had at the beginning of the year, we're able to make up now, come to the end of the year. So, you know, with that, I project, we will be definitely coming in, the, the budget is manageable that we have right now, we'll be coming in probably $100,000 or more plus, so that we can provide that back to the town, and that will actually help, you know, help fund next year's budget, because next year's budget based on the forecast will be using some of the fund balance, so whatever I can squeeze out of this year to return to the town, I do intend to try to do that. I'm keeping in mind that we do have to continue doing maintenance, we can't really defer, we don't want to defer maintenance, you know, at the, at the cost of, you know, get, getting money back for, for next year, because that'll just cause a problem for next year, so. I think the, the message is that everything's sort of intact, there's no windfall, we're going to come in, you know, right around budget, and to the extent as much as I can get back to the town this year, I do intend to get back to the town. I'm happy to ask and answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the committee on the budget update? All right. Any questions from members of the audience? All right, I don't see any, so, all right, thank you very much, John. That is 7.2. All right, 7.3 is to hear a recommendation by the superintendent on reporting progress and assessments during the COVID-19 school closure and act as appropriate. So just a quick note on this for the committee. There, there really isn't anything here for us to act on, this is really just for us to, the only action we're taking is to hear the preliminary recommendation, so the grading is, the, the grading measurements are not something under the purview of the school committee, what is under the purview of the school committee is how those grades are reported. So this is, our only action tonight is just to hear and, and discuss the preliminary proposal for reporting progress and assessments for the duration of the school closure. So Paul, I don't know if you're leading us off.
Yeah, I'll, I'll lead us off real quick if you don't mind. Thank you, Michelle, for that. First of all, Principal Rick Swanson is going to inform the committee tonight on the progress he's planning for discussing the grading of term three and/or term four of the school year. Now, as you know, you've, we have heard from literally hundreds of parents and students who have advocated both for providing choice grading and those that have added, advocated for no grading changes with the, the credit, no credit. Our guiding principle has been to cause no harm to any student, yet we understand that many of the districts around us and around the state are opting for some grading, even within a credit, no credit system. We also understand that no grading system is going to be satisfied to all, or satisfying to all, but we are confident, I am confident, that whatever Mr. Swanson puts forward, it will be done with the best interest of all of our students in mind as we move forward, so with that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Swanson, who can present what he's thinking.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Austin, I appreciate those remarks, and you're certainly right that this is an issue that has aroused a great deal of attention in the last couple of weeks, and I will say it's far from the most important issue that any of us are confronting right now, but it certainly is an issue that has generated a lot of attention, and I think a fair amount of controversy as well. I do though feel confident that we've had a good process to this point, and that we're very close to being able to announce publicly, and I think it will be as part of our, our next remote learning plan to make it official, what our policy will be with regard to grades going forward over the rest of the year. We, we've been forced into a reassessment of the initial plan that was announced when we first went into remote learning, because of course, we were expecting at that point a return to school, and hoping for a return to school on May 4th, and expecting that we would then have an abbreviated fourth term with a return to regular grades at that point. Obviously, at this point, that's no longer a possibility, so in looking at where do we go from this point in order to fairly assess student work and reward student, for students for their efforts over the second half of the year, and so in framing that question, I would agree with your introductory comments, Dr. Austin, that among our guiding principles, we're certainly to hold students harmless for the effects of school closure. Also, and I think this is number one, to prioritize the social emotional well-being of our students, and keep in mind that that's always our first goal, and simultaneous to that, promoting equity and ensuring fairness for all of our students in that process, so. I'll share with all of you tonight what our tentative proposal is. It's not official yet at this point, but we anticipate that we're very close to, to being there, and I certainly would invite feedback from the school committee or from members of the public, although I will say, as I look through the room, I've already heard from many, many people in the room tonight. I, I think the estimate of several hundred emails is about right on this topic, so I think we have a good sense of the diversity of opinion that exists on this. And so here's what we've come to at this point, several bullet points that I'll list for you, the first being that while our second semester at the high school is, of course, typically broken up into two quarters, third term and fourth term with a final exam at the end of the year, all of which would be included in the, in the final grade, this year, I'm recommending that we instead have one single long third term, and that we continue with our plan announced several weeks ago to cancel final exams, so we do not intend to have any final exams this year. We intend to stick with several other aspects of our most recent plan, which include keeping those first few weeks of so-called enrichment activities, that's between the start of school closure on March 13th, and then the launch of our remote learning plan on April 6th, that those three weeks would remain ungraded as enrichment activities, and that all work completed since April 6th would still be graded on a credit, no credit system. One thing that's new here is that I'm recommending that the designation of credit would actually be a signed numeric value, and that grade would actually be 100, that a no credit designation would count as a 60%. We would also be recommending at that same time that the relative value of each of our terms be shifted from the traditional, so that under a new model, in order to arrive at a year-end grade, we would count the first term as 35% of your final grade, second term would count also as 35% of the final grade. The mid-year exam would stay worth 10%, as it typically is, and that the third-term grade, again, it ultimately would be credit, no credit, and an equivalent of numeric score of 100 or 60, that that third term would count as 20%. This would hold true for all full-year courses. Semester courses though, and there are some of those, semester courses that began on January 27th would be graded as credit, no credit, it would not get a numeric score. We feel like the amount of, of real work that was done in a semester course that started late January would not be sufficient to actually give a numeric score, so the transcript on a second semester course this year actually would show credit or no credit, and would have no impact on a student's GPA. I would add that the factors that, that helped our leadership team and me personally to arrive at this proposal included a review of the various approaches taken by other schools, and as many of you may know, from, just from reading the news, or if you have contacts in other towns or other school districts, the approaches that are being taken across the region and across the country are widely divergent. There's an incredible range of options that are available to schools, and in the absence of any real guidance here from State Department of Education or federally, there are incredibly varied approaches to this question. And yet, our plan does share a number of similarities with, with other districts, and looking at their plans, discussing this issue with other principals locally was very helpful to me. There's been extensive discourse with Hingham Public Schools administrators, particularly my assistant principals, our department directors, our central office staff, there have been quite a few hours devoted to this question. I've also met with our Hingham High School School Council on the issue, I've heard from quite a few teachers who've contacted me on this issue as well, and that on top of an incredible amount of feedback from a variety of stakeholders, parents and students alike, again, probably a couple of hundred, at least, emails that have come in, and those emails all over the board in terms of their recommendation. I would like to address briefly the, the issue of why not keep numeric averages, or give students the option to keep numeric averages as of March 12th, because that was a very common suggestion. It was not necessarily the most common suggestion, but if there was a plurality of any one unique suggestion that came forward from students who were doing well as of March 12th in their classes, or parents of those students who were doing very well, and would have liked to have the option to keep their unique average for that term, I'd like to address that just very briefly, because I've gotten so many questions about that. And I would argue that taking that route as opposed to the one we're taking is, is actually settling on a snapshot in time that's very arbitrary, that's, that's random, and that would have deprived students of an equal opportunity to have proven themselves at that point. For example, a student who had perhaps been absent from school a day or two before school was closed, and didn't have an opportunity to take a test or some other assessment that all of their classmates had completed, or that you were in one section of a course that, that had a major assessment, the science class that had a big lab assignment on the Thursday before we closed, but another section of that lab was scheduled to do it the next day, or so forth, there are endless examples of ways in which settling on that March 12th date was completely random, was arbitrary, and would have deprived students of an equal chance to prove their standing at that point in time. Instead, we're settling on a recommendation that a determination of credit for the term would equal a numeric score of 100%, which obviously is, is very generous. It's, it's not really an aberration though either, I'm looking at the plans at other neighboring schools that have chosen similar paths, and, and my feeling is that granting that 100% score to students who do earn credit for the entire length of third term might bring some satisfaction to those students who are hoping to reclaim the good standing they had as of March 12th, but it also gives everyone an opportunity to yield those gains, so we recognize we're likely to see a good deal of grade inflation as a result of that, but the boost that comes from it is universally available to every one of our students, and is therefore, it's non-discriminatory, and it's I think, fair to all, so that, also in keeping with our philosophy of holding students harmless, anybody who earns credit for the term will see their grade increase, and nobody who earns credit for this duration of time will see their grade fall. So as a result, truly, all students are held harmless, and this is in the midst of the greatest public health emergency in more than a century. In the midst of all that, if we can say we have treated all of our students fairly, we've held them all harmless, and they all have an equal chance to make gains during that time, I think that's a policy that, that we can all feel good about and can believe in, and I hope it will have the support of our, our school committee and our community. And I'll stop there.
No, thank you. That's really helpful, the context. The plan, really appreciate it. I know this is, like I said earlier, this is one of the most difficult times for everyone, right, and appreciate your thoughtfulness in putting together this plan and the equity that you're bringing into it. To me, it sounds like a very, very, very well-compromised plan. You know, I know that for teachers, you know, grading is one of the most important things they do, and they do it with such integrity and such thoughtfulness. So I, and I know you share that, as a teacher yourself, as an educator, that that's one of the things that you, as educators, pride yourselves on so much, so I don't want to, I would, I don't want people to feel that that takes away anything from the grading that was already done for the term, and for the students who worked hard for those grades, but I, I think this approach is probably the most fair approach that I can think of. I would so appreciate your work on this, and the input from folks that you took to do this, so thank you. Are there other folks on the committee who have any questions or comments for Rick, and I just see one person from the community raising their hand, so just give me a minute, just let the committee members. So just give me a minute, just let the committee members have an opportunity.
Michelle?
Yep, Carrie, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just, I think that sounds very fair and equitable. And I just wanted to thank you for the thoughtful approach to it. I know it took a lot of energy, and you've received a lot of feedback. But this really, truly does seem like the best way to go forward and make sure that nobody's harmed from this. Like, they'll just come out better, and then everyone can focus on the teaching and the learning going forward. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Great, thank you, Carrie. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add about the thoughtfulness and that considering the good of the whole community and how it represents everyone. And we have to be thoughtful of everyone is why we're recognized by U.S. News &amp; World Report as a high-performing school. I'd also like to add to students, parents who are so concerned about grades is that the grades are a small component. They're not as small, but they're a component of what colleges are going to look at. And that getting through this time and showing the effort, maybe, you know, coming out of this stronger and having that relationship with the teacher to have an interesting and really stellar teacher recommendation for your application, or a good story for your own essays on a college application, and what insightfulness you find from yourself could be just as valuable, if not more valuable, of your transcript when approaching a college. Because the whole college experience is going to be completely different coming out of this. And there are a lot of other factors of looking in your college search than just a GPA. And so I think you, your approach of having to wait for your final grade point average accommodates everyone, gives them recognition for what work they have done, and keeps the integrity, as Michelle mentioned, and how the teachers have graded in the past. But gives opportunity for all of us to keep learning from ourselves during this time. So I am very pleased. I appreciate all the thoughtfulness. And I hope everyone is thoughtful, too, as they're approaching this and keeps doing the work. Because I know my own kids, they don't like the online learning, but they're learning a lot about themselves, and the light bulbs have gone off on what they're doing. And they've had their good moments of, you know, keeping up the learning. So thank you. I appreciate the thoughtfulness.
Thank you, Liza, and I appreciate that perspective very much as well. And your comments on the college process, I think, are totally in keeping with what I have seen from admissions officials. And that's certainly factored into our decision as well. I will point out, too, that our counseling department has prepared an extensive document that will soon be posted that includes a lot of guidance for, particularly for those students who are juniors right now. And I think that's probably the group of people who are most concerned about the impact here. And there's no question that the process is changing in a very fundamental way. And it has to, in light of this. And I'm hopeful and confident that our plan will recognize that and give students the best opportunity to present themselves in a good way to those colleges.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to recognize Jen Gallagher, who has patiently been raising her hand. So Jen, if you want to take yourself off mute, and I think we still do the, just state your name and your address for the record, and you can answer, make your question or comment. So Jen, you're on.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, everyone. First of all, this is Jen Bengelder Gallagher, 13 Independence Lane in Hingham as well. Thank you, first of all, Mr. Swanson, for such a thoughtful approach, and I sincerely appreciate it. I guess I do have one question as it relates to lower grades. That's where my kids are. And I don't know if there's a criteria that's been determined in when a child receives credit or doesn't receive credit, or is it an individual situation? I guess I ask because there are kids who are not able to complete the work for whatever reason. Maybe it's a parent that's sick, maybe that's a parent that's a first responder. They can do work sometimes, but not all the time. And I guess I just want to make sure that if there are mitigating factors at home, that those children aren't penalized, or if they're having some sort of emotional issue as a result of the school closures. So I guess I was trying to figure out, in your mind or in the committee's mind, if there's a particular number of assignments that someone needs to, you know, complete, if they complete part of the assignments, but not all of them. You know, when does someone receive, you know, no credit versus credit, if that determination's been made?
Right, that's a great question. And I do think, and I would fully acknowledge, that's an area that I'd like to see a little bit more clarity in terms of our published written statements on that question. And I think we'll see that very soon. I would also share my philosophy on that is that any student who is making a fair effort to complete their work ought to be earning credit. And would also note that, and my recommendation to the superintendent with regard to grading policy, and if this is ultimately the plan that we decide to move forward with, the numerical score that's attached to no credit even at a 60 is actually a passing score. So that I think we're also consistent with some of the guidance that we have received from the commissioner with regard to ensuring that students are held harmless and have the opportunity to move forward in their classes. And I think this is probably K to 12, not only at the high school, but that we don't want to see this opportunity hold students back from moving forward and making progress in their classes. So in a situation like the ones you mentioned, where students are facing exceptionally difficult circumstances, I think there's every likelihood that with some effort, they will be earning credit. And even in the cases where there's a no credit, numerical score of 60 is going to allow a student to earn a passing score and have the opportunity to move forward.
Thank you. Thanks, Rick. Jen, are you feeling good about that answer? Does that satisfy your question?
All right, hold on, let me just take myself off. No, I mean, I guess from what I'm hearing, it sounds like there's more work that needs to be done. You know, I guess I'm concerned about those kids that, you know, do their best for one reason. And they feel like, and I should also back up Mr. Swanson. So I'm one of the co-chairs of CPAC for the town. And so one of the things that I think we've heard from parents is a lot of parents feel like that notion of credit is being held over their head. And it's not necessarily something that I think is a great feeling from parents' perspective. And I guess I want to make sure that, you know, the threat of credit isn't necessarily something that, you know, if a child's doing their best, and then they, you know, then they get a scare tactic of, oh, there's no credit. It can be really debilitating to the child that's already trying their hardest. And I guess I want to make sure that that area is recognized as well.
Okay, I appreciate that feedback. And I would be very concerned to hear of a student who, to hear the word like a scare tactic or a threat, I think is completely inappropriate in a situation like this. I hope none of our students would feel that way. And if that is the case, that it's not aligning with our goals here of if we're erring at all, it's on the side of generosity and compassion and forgiveness and supporting our students in every way possible. But back to the original part of your question, too, in terms of a more concrete, explicit definition of what credit means, is there a percentage attached to it? I think we will be closer to public communication on that soon. But it should be in line with this philosophy of support and recognizing honest effort.
That's great. Honestly, I think, you know, in hearing from parents, that was one thing that was very concerning. For a lot of parents, that was a big sticking point on our page recently. And from the parents that I've heard from, and I just, you know, I feel the need to mention it at this point in time.
I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Yes. Thanks, Jen. Thanks for bringing that, because that had come up loud and clear at the CPAC meeting last week. So I appreciate you bringing that up, and Rick for your identifying it. And we will definitely have some clarity around that, I'm assuming, at the May 4th meeting when we sort of wrap all this up together. All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Jen. I see another hand raised, just coming up on the screen as the letter C. So I'm not sure who that is. But if you're...
Hi, that's me.
Oh, okay, hello.
I'm Callie Daly. I just have a quick question.
Sorry, can you state your address?
Oh, yeah, 3 Butler Road.
Thank you.
And so are the, like, hundreds or sixties, is that going to be affected on, like, class level? Like, if you get, like, is it still going to be like 100 AP versus, like, an upper standard or?
Yes, my intention would be that would be regardless of what level of a class you're in. Earning credit would result in a term three average of 100%. That would then become 20% of your overall full-year grade. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Callie. Any other members of the committee or the community that have questions for Mr. Swanson? All right, I'm not seeing any. All right, so Rick, I want to thank you again for the plan. And again, we will formalize all this as part of next week's meeting. And see, no other questions? All right, I'm going to move on to item seven.
Michelle, I just heard there was another question from Marissa Costello.
I don't, all right, so Marissa.
Can you identify yourself again?
Sorry, I'm not hearing or seeing.
Can you raise your hand?
No, go ahead, Marissa. Sorry about that.
There she is, yep.
No problem. The other question I had, and really, this for me is more from a ninth grader. There are probably some kids out there that are having a hard time learning remotely, kind of need that direct interaction with their teacher. But in a class like math, where a lot of what they're learning is going to build, their new stuff will build on the old stuff, I'm concerned about the fall. And if they're not getting the foundation they need, what will happen in the fall?
It's a great question, and it's one that won't be easily answered. And it's certainly at the forefront of our teachers' thinking, our department directors' thinking in terms of what adjustments are going to be need, will need to be made in terms of the starting point of some of our classes. Math may be an area of particular concern, given that the reality is just that we won't be able to complete the same amount of curriculum that we would have been able to complete had we been at school throughout this time period. But that's very much a topic that will be addressed through department meetings and with the leadership of our department directors. I know our math director, Dave Jewitt, in particular, has been very focused on that question as well. Probably not one that I can give a crystal clear answer to at this point, but could assure you that it's at the forefront of our thinking as we look forward to next year.
I'll also add in, Rick, hi, I'm Jamie. I'm the Assistant Superintendent. This is also an issue K to 12, right? So it's really not just a high school issue. So our department directors, our elementary team will be looking at sort of curriculum adjustments sort of across the board. We're lucky in Hingham, we have K-12 content directors who actually oversee, for example, Mrs. Andrews here, who was speaking earlier about what's happening with primary reading, oversees the English Language Arts Reading Department, really preschool through grade 12. And so those administrators are, will become tasked with curricular adjustments across the entire spectrum to make sure that we sort of are on the right trajectory, particularly in mathematics, where our core sequence can lead them to fairly high-level courses by the time they hit the end of their course of study, as well as other sort of areas where they're able to engage in more advanced coursework because of the core sequences. And so that's going to, we're looking at that sort of through K, through pre-K through 12. The place, like I mentioned a little earlier, that we're most concerned is in primary reading, where we don't get to have a five-year-old back again, right, for that block of time. But that said, if it's any reassurance, that's really an issue that we're going to be tackling from a district K through 12 perspective, because that's going to be true across every single curriculum area. What I can say is our teachers do have a very strong command of the teaching and learning, and this is the content that needs to be covered. And you can always, we already are in planning. So back maybe three weeks ago, when we got the, or four weeks ago, rather, when we got the initial call that we were actually going to be shut down through May, the wheels began turning. And we weren't convinced that May 4th would be a date that would sort of become a reality, particularly as the pandemic really took hold, and more people were infected, and our bubble began to grow. And so we have been sort of planning for Plan B, which will be the reset of the curriculum pre-K to 12. The one benefit that we have is the state, the district has been working independently on our own on our power standards. So we know sort of what is the most essential learning that needs to happen in order to advance to that next level. And the state has, in their most recent guidance, has issued power standards to us, again, pre-K through 12, that is allowing us to sort of really hone our focus for this remote learning plan learning, to ensure the requisite skills are there to build off in the fall, to make sure that we get all of our kids to those advanced courses or the places where they would otherwise be had it not been the four-month shutdown. So your question is really well-taken, and it's something that we have been beginning, any of the directors here can sort of, you know, verify that this has been a part of our conversation for about four weeks now. Sort of as we plan for this, we also have a thought to what we're not covering to make sure that it's addressed in time. And it won't, I don't want anyone to feel like either it will be like it's forced, made-up work either. Our teachers will sort of integrate that into their teaching and learning, so the kids would actually never know that they're making the adjustments they're making. And that's really just how talented they are at the work that they do. So we're confident that we'll be able to address those perceived gaps. But in reality, much of the curriculum is cyclical and repeats itself over time to sort of reinforce those really core concepts. And what you'll find is as we go to Remote Learning 2.0, that really is going to be where our focus goes, right? What are the absolute essential skills kids need to know in order to advance to the next grade? And that's where all of our attention will go for the whole district. So I really appreciate, Marissa, that question. It's really well-placed.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Marissa. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, I'm not seeing any. So hopefully, I'm not missing anybody, but I don't see any raised hands, and I don't see, hear anybody unmuted. So thank you, everyone. Again, thank you, Mr. Swanson, for the proposal. And thanks for everyone who answered the questions from folks who attended our meeting tonight. All right, I'm going to move on to 7.4. And if, again, if I missed anyone, just raise your hand or unmute yourself and interrupt me. So item 7.4 is to discuss the memorandum of agreement with the HEA Unit A regarding online learning and operating during the state of emergency through May 1st, 2020, and act as appropriate. Sorry, I don't know, Dr. Austin, were you going to take us through this?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to, you have it in your packet, which is the original version, which you've already seen and discussed before. Once again, this is the original MOA that was developed between the school committee and the Hingham Education Association that you wanted to formally approve in a meeting. The original document was intended, as you've already said, to end on May 1st, and is, will be the kind of leeway into where we go now for our second session, beginning May 4th. As we're now closed, or close to the remainder of the school year, close, close to the remainder of the school year, sorry. A successor agreement will now be negotiated starting later this week. And so we will be discussing that. We hope to have an agreement for a successor agreement, certainly as we begin on May 4th, hopefully, our next meeting. However, the current agreement, just that we know, will remain in full until a successor agreement is negotiated successfully.
All right, thank you. I'll take questions from the committee on this. Sorry, Liza, did you have something?
No, no, I was going to share with the community that we did discuss this. No, no, I was going to share with the community that we did discuss this in a session because it was per contract. And the only change was that we had changed working through April vacation. And so sort of delayed approving it because we added that in there, which everyone was in agreement with. So on that, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with HEA Unit A and Unit B regarding expectations between the Hingham Education Association and the Hingham Public Schools for regarding online learning and operating during the state of emergency through May 1st, 2020.
I'll second.
Thank you, Carrie. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Ray Estes has a question. So Ray, I will recognize you if you want to take yourself off mute.
Thanks. Glad to see everybody. Hope everyone's doing well. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. I just had a question. Given that the original plan was through May 1st, and now obviously things have been extended. Doesn't it make more sense since particularly you're, I think you have two meetings scheduled with HEA this week? That you revised the language in the MOA rather than voting it tonight, because some of it is a little bit outdated at this point? And particularly since it was a recommendation made tonight, which has not been adopted yet or approved by the superintendent. So it's just not really clear to the extent that there are things approved that are going to be approved in that MOA that might change or be superseded or outdated. Just curious.
Then in the MOA, it references that, well, want to have this in effect. And then the MOA references that if there's a change or an extension that the agreement would be relooked at. So we've agreed to this with the HEA. So we want to approve what was agreed with. We can work off of this to then make any adjustments. We want something in place because we had agreed with them of all the terms, and then we can work off of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. No, thanks, Ray. Any other, or any discussion from committee members? All right, we have motions been made and seconded, so I will take a roll call vote. Ness?
Hi.
Libby? Libby? I will come back to Libby.
Hi.
Thank you, Libby. Liza?
Hi.
Dr. Ed?
Hi.
Carrie? Oops, Carrie?
Hi.
Thank you. Carlos?
Hi.
Carlos, all right, and I am an I.
Hi.
Thank you, Carlos, and I am an I as well. So we are unanimous for the memorandum of agreement with the HEA Unit A. Thank you, everyone, for the work on that. And we'll be bringing back another one very shortly for this one. All right, item 7.5 is to receive a proposed policy 5.24, accessible use technology. This is a first read. So Carrie, do you want to read what you've drafted for the committee?
So as you said, this is a first read, and it's replacing the current policy 5.24. It's kind of beefing it up. We thought it was important to update it now and not wait till we get to the section I in the MASC policy manual. Especially since there's so much, all the learning really is happening remotely right now. So we looked at some policies from many different districts and consulted with Dr. Austin, who shared this with Joe Andrews. We like this policy because it sets some parameters around the rights and responsibilities of the district and all of everyone who uses the district technology without getting too specific. There were some towns that have policies that explicitly stated that they use Google, for example. So we wanted, we wanted to have a little bit of flexibility. And we also liked that it explicitly states that the district is not liable for use, inappropriate use of electronic resources or violations of copyright restrictions, users' mistakes or negligence, or cost incurred by users. So that was some of the thought process behind that. And so what we drafted is, so it's, it would be in the new manual I, J, and DB acceptable use policy. But since we're doing it right now, it would be HPS 5.24. The purpose is the Hingham Public Schools will provide access for employees and students to the system network, including access to external networks for educational purposes. Do you want me to read all of this? Or maybe it's in the packet? I'm happy to do it, or?
Um. I don't can you?
People are interested. I'm happy to read it.
Very long.
Yeah.
I'm interested, but it is very long for those following along at home.
I'm just thinking of the next agenda item, which is the entire policy subsection A.
Right, exactly.
I think, can you just give us like the quick quick elevator overview of what changed? What's the difference?
Oh, the original one didn't have very much at all. Right. So this one is basically, it's saying that we're providing access for student employees. It's for educational purposes. And the availability, so the superintendent will implement and monitor and evaluate the HPS system and network for instructional and administrative purposes. It, it says that access to the system is a privilege, not a right. And one important update is the superintendent or is designated will develop and implement administrative procedures and user agreements consistent with the mission of the Hingham Public Schools. It reminds people that email transmissions are monitored. That was in our current one. That we will, it says we will use appropriate technology to filter inappropriate materials. It's the education. So there will be some training for, for students and staff on how to use the network in an age-appropriate way. And that we are in compliance with the Children's Internet Protection Act, which was not in our current policy, but it's important to have in there. And then the last piece is the liability piece that I mentioned earlier.
Great, thank you. All right, and if, if anyone is interested in, anyone in the audience who is interested in looking at this, we can make this available, right, as part of the packet. All right, thank you. So that is just a first read. Anyone on the committee have any questions or comments on the draft proposal? All right, any questions from anyone in the audience about the draft proposal? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to item 7.6, which is to receive and review proposed Section A of Hingham Public Schools Policy Manual. It seems like a very large portion of things to look at, also in your packets?
It is, it is a lot. And this is not the, that's not, this is not the biggest section. So the policy subcommittee has undertaken a review of the MASC sample policy manual, along with the corresponding HPS policies in consultation with Dr. Austin and the MASC Field Director Jim Hardy. And our goal for this is really to make sure that we are in compliance with the law, that we are using best practices. And we want this to be usable. We want this to be a good tool for everyone in the school system. So we were working on that. And for each, each section, the subcommittee is discussing revisions. And in some cases, some cases replace existing HPS policies. Sometimes we're revising them, and sometimes we're keeping them if we like is the best. And then we, as we said, we're missing some policies that we are required to have, so we're adding those in. And yeah, so this section was, the Section A covers foundations and basic commitments, which includes our mission statement, legal authority of the full committee, anti-harassment and anti-discrimination policies, and a number of other policies that are in the packet. I just wanted to, a couple of procedural notes. So when the full committee does, this is just a first read, but when the full committee votes, the motion will be to approve the section in form. And then once all of the sections are approved, the entire manual will be adopted and will rescind previous manuals. Also, the four, in the, the piece in your packet, the formatting is a little off. MASC is going to clean that up for us once we vote on the content. And I also left the MASC commentary where it was in there, just so if anyone had any questions about why that policy was there. And so, so yeah, it, as we go through the section of the policy manual, we have B ready to go with the next meeting if we have time. If you, if you go through and you have questions, if you would just shoot them to me, that would be really helpful. So we can go back with, there's a lot in each of these sections, and it'd be helpful to just be able to go back and look at the history of why we made the decisions we made. So if you could do that, that's good. If, if something comes to you in the meeting, then we'll, we'll figure it out then. So yeah, so that's where we are with A.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right, so you're just, you want folks to take a look at this? Get back to you with questions, comments, and then we will be adopting all of this.
Yeah.
All right. That sounds great. Thank you. Does anybody on the committee have any questions about that policy, Section A? That's great work. Truly coming together. So thank you, Carrie, for leading this policy subcommittee and for Libby and Liza for doing all the work that goes into this. I think having these new policies that correspond with mask guidelines and state guidelines and ever-changing laws and regulations on education is really important. And I think it's a great way to be able to incorporate now as things change, and we get updates on things, it'll be much easier to update our own policies to reflect changes. So I appreciate that. All right. We can move on to item number eight, which are any items that were 48-hour, not known 48 hours in advance of the meeting. I had not heard from anyone looking to introduce any 48-hour items. So I'm going to assume that's still the case. So item nine is subcommittee and project reports. I'll just go around the camera and see what folks have, if folks have any subcommittee or reports for us. So Ness?
I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Libby?
I have nothing to report.
All right, Liza?
I wanted to report that last week, we had a master plan committee meeting remotely on Zoom. And it was a check-in with the committee. The consultant has been sending us different sections of drafts to begin editing, and the master plan committee decided to continue working even remotely. And we're going to keep getting through different issues. Probably slow down the overall process, but we felt it was worthwhile to continue the efforts on different sections. So as I'll report back as we have more meetings. And then salary negotiations will discuss again in executive session, but we have been continuous to work from home, so.
Okay. Great, thank you. Dr. Ed, do you have anything to report for us? Sorry, you're on mute.
No.
You're good? All right, thank you. Carlos?
Do you have any? Long-range planning. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Long-range planning will be scheduled a meeting on two, next couple of weeks. John, I'm working with his teacher to identify the numbers that he would like to recommend to the long-range planning. So Dr. Schreier and Ness, I'll send you a couple of dates and we'll take from there.
Great, thank you. I don't have anything to report other than I was, Dr. Viness, I will be in touch with you very shortly because I wanted to see about scheduling a special ed subcommittee meeting. If you, just to touch base with the subcommittee and see what is going on. I think another thing that I just wanted to mention to folks, and it's probably a little bit tricky because this committee's term has been extended through June. That we were, we had talked about starting a finance subcommittee. And I think we had originally thought that that would be something that would start when the new committee sat, but I think it could be worth getting going on some of that work now. I know John has a lot of things he needs to be thinking about. I think we're going to have the challenging, maybe too strong of a word, but we're going to have a lot of new information coming in on revenue and expenses and some work I think that that subcommittee could potentially start getting on. So I'll put that on the agenda maybe for next week to formally establish that subcommittee and then figure out who's going to serve on that committee. All right. If that's it for subcommittee and project reports, and if the, no one on the administration side has anything to add. So I don't see, I will take a motion to adjourn to executive session. I'm embarrassed to say, can I'm not sure that I have the details to get into the executive session. So can somebody email those to me? And give me five minutes after this to regroup in executive session. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, I think we should all just stay. We should, we should just stay here until we get instructions. But I can, I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purposes of approval of minutes of the executive session on April 6th, 2020, discussing matters related to the HEA Unit A collective bargaining contract and discussing matters related to the HEA Unit A collective bargaining negotiations, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and to act as appropriate.
All right. Second?
I'll start again.
Thank you. And then a roll call vote to adjourn to executive session. Ness?
Hi.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. So thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Really appreciate the engagement and the feedback. Appreciate all of the administrators and department heads and resource teachers and educators who dialed in tonight and offered all your hard work. Really appreciate it. Next meeting is May 4th at 7:00 PM. It will also be remote learn, remote learning. It will also be a remote meeting, and we hope to see folks there as well. Thank you so much. We are adjourned into executive session.